And welcome to the September 3 meeting of the Temple Terrace City Council. I can't believe it's September already. Somehow 24 is just like gone away. I'm not sure what happened. So if you would please to remember to silence your electronic devices. And if you would, please stand and join me in the invocation and the pledge. Lord, we come before you tonight in gratitude for the many blessings we enjoy. Help us to remember those who are less fortunate than us and to always provide support to them in meaningful ways. Grant us wisdom tonight as we strive to advance the common good of all in our amazing city. Amen.
I put allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
Thank you. And so tonight, our historical or fun or interesting fact, we have to describe it different ways because sometimes it's fun, sometimes it's not. But it should be great tonight because it's our vice mayor's turn. And so Meredith, take it away.
Tonight, I thought I'd talk a little bit about the Temple Terrace Sentinel. And I was just kind of perusing the USF Digital Commons and I read through some archived newspapers from the earlier days of Temple Terrace. And many of us know about the Temple Terrace Beacon, but today I'm going to talk about the Temple Terrace Sentinel, which was in print from January 17, 1940 through July 4, 1946. The publication was edited by John L Perry Jr., whose home was on Willow Wick Avenue. This publication was published weekly in a newsletter format with the tagline, "Temple Terrace's first newspaper. We print only the truth." It wasn't really the truth though, because the first newspaper was actually the Beacon, which was first published in 1931. But I don't think the Sentinel authors intentionally misrepresented that fact. So it costs 10 cents per month for subscribers in 1940, but that would be about $2.10 or 15 cents today per month. And the publication's content, which was written by reporters Jimmy Hawk, Jewel Swanson, Johnny Rennick, Bunny Schultzke, and Whitney Pennell, includes community news, births, deaths, illnesses, civic announcements, classified advertisements, mostly from Allenson's Grocery, and anecdotes, all of which you can view on the Digital Commons website. So I found something interesting as I was reading through some of these, and that's that the newspapers, I guess, it's sophistication and content changes a lot over the course of its six years. And in the beginning, it's really simple, really short, and kind of like cute quips. Like for example, from 1940, I have one that says, "Musical notes withdrawn on musical notes." And it says, "We're proud of our musical talent in Temple Terrace. Mr. Maney, an accordion teacher, is very good. Even the mayor takes lessons from him. And Mrs. Van De Venter is a fine piano teacher and several people take lessons from her." So it's really simplistic and short, and that's the whole article. But as you get into later times, like 1946, you start to get longer articles. And there's like a profile of the Gillettes. And one article was kind of cute, said, "Wednesday afternoon, Patsy Rennick, Tampa Daily Times carrier, saw Mitzi, her dog, knocked into the side of the road by a hit-and-run driver. Mrs. Jobson, who happened to be nearby, gave the dog first aid. By checking the license number, Patsy located the driver at the golf club after he came in from playing golf. She learned from the man, a Mr. Dixon, that he wasn't even sorry." So you can read through these, and they're kind of charming. This one even has a resolution showing appreciation for the principal of the school. And at the end of the resolution, it said, "Part of the resolution is that the resolution be sent to the Temple Terrace Sentinel to be published." And it was. So it was kind of, I don't know, well-known, well-publicized. But the breadth of the newsletter is surprisingly wide, and it sometimes even covers things from outside of Temple Terrace. But as I read more editions of the newspaper, I noticed that the person who wrote it, John Perry, his father was also named John Perry. So it was kind of hard to tell like who was the actual author, because the author was 11 years old when he started this. And he continued until he was 15. So it was written by a kid. And I looked up the birth dates of all the other people who helped write the newspaper, and they were all ranging in age from 10 to 17 as well. So Temple Terrace's second community newspaper was a youth publication that was read by an audience of all ages in this community when it was only about 200 or so people. So there you have it.
And for a 16 or 17-year-old kid in 1945 or '46, if you read his stuff around election time, he had some very strong opinions for a teenage boy. And so don't change the channel. Let's come and back up. So very good. Thank you, Meredith. So this is a great honor, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call one of our employees, Floyd Dozier, to the podium, please. Mr. Dozier is one of our meter readers in the utility billing department. And we have a lot of, we brag all the time about our employees, but usually the public gets to see the most public-facing, you know, the leisure services, the police, the fire. It's not as frequent that we get to recognize somebody who's less public-facing or less. And so this is a terrific honor. I'd like to thank Mr. Dozier for being here tonight. I know you've worked all day, and so this is not, it's easy for us. But so, Mr. Dozier is here because in his work as a meter reader, he had the opportunity to leap into action here and actually save one of his coworkers' lives. And so his life-saving efforts in response to a medical emergency involving a fellow employee, who I believe is here also, this is Mary, as a result of his quick thinking and immediate action, he managed to prevent Mary from suffering what could have been a potentially life-altering situation. And so we wanted to give a certificate of recognition to Mr. Dozier publicly for these efforts. And I have to tell the public that these kinds of things, although life-saving doesn't happen every day, but these kinds of things happen in Temple Terrace all the time, and we don't always get a chance to talk about them. So we're very proud of your work, not just for saving Mary. We're very grateful for that, but we're also grateful for your work that you do for us all the time. So would you like to say a few words?
Like I was talking to you earlier, I would have did that for anybody. I would have did it for anybody. So that's pretty much it.
So how long have you been with the city?
Almost a year and a half now.
Really?
Yes, sir.
Good. Well, I hope we're treating you well.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So let's give him a round of applause. Thank you. Here, go up here. There we go.
All right, three, two, one. Thank you.
So our next, oh, we have more good news. This is really good news. This is stuff that we're really proud of. We're proud of Floyd too, but we're really, really proud of this. So the Best of the Best Awards, many of you know this already, celebrate businesses and organizations in nearly 200 categories. It's a vote-based contest focusing on and highlighting the best cities, businesses, companies, groups, locations, items, and services in the Tampa Bay area. Nominations for the Best of the Best categories were provided to the Tampa Bay Times by the community during the nomination period, which opened on April 24 this year. Nominees were required to be individuals, organizations, businesses, and schools that serve the Tampa Bay region. After the nomination period was closed on May 29, the names of the nominated organizations and businesses in each category were finalized, and the Best of the Best voting ballot was prepared. On June 5, the voting period opened, and members of the community were asked to vote on one choice in each category. All voting was done online through a provided link to the voting platform, and all voters were asked to provide their names and email addresses for verification purposes. So you couldn't just vote, 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 right? Nominations and votes were tallied by a third-party service. Best of the Best and its affiliates did not know the results of the contest until after the votes were tabulated. The official results of the Best of the Best winners were published in the August 25 Tampa Bay Times Sunday Edition. And in the Best of the Best Hometown category, the Best of the Best Award was presented to guests, the city of Temple Terrace. I think everybody on the dais, we should go down and get a photograph. This is not just a council. This is manager. I don't know if we can fit all the directors up here or not, but let's try to cram as many people as we can. Wish we could fit 27,000 residents up here too.
Can all of you scoot over like one little bit? All right, Jason? Okay. All right. Perfect. All right, three, two, one. Got it.
Okay. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the August 20 minutes from our city council meeting? And if so, is there a motion?
To approve.
Any corrections or amendments to the minutes? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no nays. Minutes are adopted. Persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda. There are forms in the back of the room if there's anybody here who would like to address the council at this time for items not on the agenda or items on the consent agenda. I currently have no requests to speak, and I don't see anybody coming up. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no nays. Consent agenda is adopted. Next item is a public hearing, the first public hearing and first reading of Ordinance 1570, approving the fiscal year 2025 tax levy. I will open the public hearing and ask our finance director, Jim Ingram, to explain.
Good evening, Mayor Ross and the city council. In accordance with the applicable provisions of the city charter and the Florida statutes, the city council scheduled two public hearings on the property tax millage levy. The first hearing is being held tonight, September 3, 2024, to solicit public comments on the proposed property tax millage levy prior to the adoption of the annual budget for the 2025 fiscal year. The agenda has been structured to provide the council with the opportunity to comply with both city charter and Florida statutory requirements on the budget and tax levy. The council convened a public hearing on the proposed property tax millage levy and made announcements at the public hearing prior to formal consideration of the attached resolution. The recommended City of Temple Terrace, Florida property tax millage rate for fiscal year 2025 is 6.455 per $1,000 of assessed value, which is the identical mill from the current fiscal year millage rate of 6.455. The recommended property tax millage rate of 6.455 is .3663 mills, or 6.02% higher than the rollback rate of 6.0887. Subsequent to the adoption, the council should take action to approve the attached ordinance approving the ad valorem tax rate for the upcoming fiscal year. If approved on first reading of the ordinance on September 3, 2024, it is to be scheduled for second and final reading on September 17, 2024. Main reasons for ad valorem tax revenues increasing are a proposed 4% cost of living adjustment to general employees and 2% merit pay increase upon a successful performance evaluation. Funding for the first year of a new year, a new three-year fire union contract and the second year of the police union contract, second of three years. A 24% increase in general liability insurance, a 31% increase in property insurance, a 12% increase in auto insurance, a 12% increase in health or medical insurance, $52,000 in compliance efficiencies and organizational security improvements. Overall, 4% increase in operational costs to maintain funding of current services and programs. And I will add that there are some cost reductions as well built into this, including probably the most significant one is a 6% decrease in building maintenance through consolidation and in-house use instead of going out on contracts. That is the discussion part for the millage rate tax levy. I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, councilmember questions? Councilmembers?
I do, I think.
Yes, city manager.
Just would like to clarify one item that came up during the workshops, if you'd allow me.
Sure.
I have a slide, a couple of slides just to show here. So just wanted to just further reinforce the notion of our millage rate. So as you can see here from this illustration, the millage rate has been progressively on a decline for a good chunk of time, and actually has been flat for the last several years as Mr. Ingram alluded to. But I wanted to, the item I really want to draw the public's attention to is this one right here, showing the total millage rate. So if you, when you look at your tax bill, it's not just the city. You get the city, the county, there's special districts, et cetera. So when you do all the math, what you end up getting is this scenario here. So in the FY25 proposed millage that we have before you, again, not changed from last year, your tax rate is about 18.76 mills. In Tampa, it's 19.07 mills. I wanted to make sure the council was aware of that, and the public especially because it came up as a discussion point in July at the last workshop. So just to illustrate where we stand relative to our large neighbor here to our west. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. B. Councilmembers, councilmember Fernandez.
The only thing I would ask is if you can explain so that the public understands the difference between what we're proposing as our millage rate and that it's, the millage rate itself is not changing, but what the rollback rate means.
The rollback rate is essentially a calculation that the property appraiser does after we enter in our proposed rate and looking at the values, how the values have changed over the year. And it's essentially the rate to get the same amount of revenue that we brought in last year, we would go to what they call the rollback rate, which I believe was 6.0877.
I just want to make sure that that was out there.
No questions, councilmembers? Okay, if none, I'll close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, adopting a millage rate of 6.455 mills for fiscal year 2025, said millage rate being .3663 mills or 6.02% more than the rollback rate of 6.0877 mills, providing a survivability clause and providing an effective date.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve ordinance 1570 on first reading, approving the fiscal year 2025 tax levy.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion of the motion?
I do, is this the time for comments?
Yes.
I just want to say that I do really appreciate the hard work that all the staff has done, including the finance department, because every department works to create their budget. But I think that you all have put a lot of effort into making this a responsible budget and making sure that we can find cost savings wherever we've been able to. So I know it's a lot of effort. Thank you.
Mr. Schoen, would you please call the roll?
Councilperson Fernandez?
Yes, here. Hi.
This is a yea or nay, or yes or no. Councilman Chambers?
Yes.
Mayor Ross?
Yes.
Councilwoman?
Yes.
Very good. Okay, the ordinance is passed unanimously and will appear for second reading and public hearing on Tuesday, September 17. Next item is related to this. It is the first public hearing and first reading of ordinance 1571, adopting the fiscal year 2025 annual budget. I will open the public hearing, and once again, our finance director, Jim Ingram, is here to explain.
Thank you. And I want to thank you, Councilperson Fernandez, for the kind comments. I know the whole city's staff, directors. It is a big team effort. And special thanks to our assistant finance director, Jennifer Newman, who has really put a lot of time and effort and thought into bringing about this budget together, proposed budget. In accordance with the applicable provisions of the city charter and the Florida statutes, the first of two public hearings is being held on Tuesday, September 3, at 6:00 p.m. And here we are. To solicit public comment on the annual budget for the upcoming 2025 fiscal year. Notification of the public hearing was initially provided to all property owners in the truth-in-millage or TRIM notices provided by the property appraiser's office in mid-August. The recommended budget was presented to the city council in a series of budget workshops to review and solicit adjustments to the allocations of the budget documents. The total city fiscal year 2025 budget amounts to $100,944,253. A budget summary document is attached illustrating the total budget for the upcoming fiscal year. This is in the same format that the state requires us to use for the advertisements for the second hearing. And we were also able to provide you late last week a more expanded edition of that budget, with some of the pages still under construction. It's, that is, that is a humongous effort, just putting that big book together. The proposed 2025 budget reflects the following. The millage rate of 6.455 has not changed from last year's millage rate. A 5.0 increase in single-family residential and commercial sanitation rates beginning October 1, 2024. I do want to point out that in, when I saw the agenda in our module, our granticus, under this discussion, somehow it got changed to zero and the bullet points were missing. I don't know what that was about, but it is 5%, not 0%. $700,000 to replace two severely aging sanitation trucks. That goes along with the 5% increase. 5% increase in water, sewer, and irrigation rates beginning October 1, 2024. And this budget includes $4,855,500 in water and sewer infrastructure improvements, including $2 million for Phase 1 of the Bannock Burn Downs Avenue water main construction. It's a total of $7,766,200 in capital projects using unassigned general fund balance and other general fund reserves. And this is important because none of that $7 million is calculated into the millage rate, the tax levy, because we are using basically reserves that have been built up over the last few years due to some good fortune the city has had in property values rising and more property tax dollars coming through. But these are projects that we have been talking about for a while, and it prevents us from having to go out and borrow money as well. Among these projects are the Riverside Park construction, $3 million with an additional $400,000 from the TIF reserves, since it's a CRA project. The city obligation for a new city emergency operations center, $1.5 million, and that's along with a $4.5 million grant we are receiving from the state. That was included in fiscal year 24 budget. A public safety complex conceptual design, $200,000. Family recreation center service road paving and curbing project, $750,000. And a new enterprise resource planning system, $2 million, which I think anybody that works here at the city can tell you is very badly needed. $2,36,274 in community investment tax fund expenditures to include replacing public safety vehicles and equipment, improvements for fire stations 1 and 2, city hall and public works, building renovations, and community parks and community parks and recreation facility improvements. One million, five hundred thousand in structural resurfacing projects, which comes from our streets, in street improvement fund. Again, something separate from the general fund, this is not affected by the property tax. Seven hundred and twenty-five thousand in street improvement fund trucks. Eight hundred and twenty-five thousand in ARPA-funded stormwater construction projects, and this should be the last you ever see of ARPA in the budget. That's the last of the expenditures we'll have. Two hundred and fifty thousand in non-ARPA-funded stormwater projects. A hundred thousand for the centennial celebration. Forty thousand from already existing restricted funds and sixty thousand from the unassigned fund balance. A hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars of non-capital but one-time expenditures using unassigned fund balance, including police equipment, recreational equipment, a building fee study, software installation, and network security. Four percent cost of living adjustment salary increase for general employees and two percent merit pay increase upon a successful performance evaluation. And finally, a citywide increase of two point seven five FTEs. And that is it for the review of the entire budget. And I will stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council members' questions. Councilmember Fernandez?
Obviously, we have seen extensive material and had a lot of discussion through the budget workshops that we have held. But when would the public be able to see the, like, so after this meeting, with the first reading, and if somebody wanted to look at the budget maybe in a more comprehensive document, when would they be able to see it? Because our second reading should be the next meeting, right? On the seventeenth?
Yes, on the seventeenth. We do have the condensed version that was provided in the agenda. And we do have the version that we sent all of you, which is also available to the public by request. They can call the finance department, they can call the clerk's office, and we will be glad to give them a much bigger document with more of the numbers and more detail.
That's it.
Councilmember questions? Councilmember Schizler?
For everybody's edification, what is the breakdown between operating revenue, operating expenses and capital of the hundred million?
Okay, you're looking for number breakdown?
Roughly.
Okay, let me look at my numbers here. Capital, I need to turn to my capital section. The capital, which includes all the unassigned, we have about eight million dollars in the unassigned, is roughly around nineteen, twenty million. I do not have the number, total number, off the top of my head or printed down here for the operating. It may be in this, actually, let me, just give me a moment here. I think I do have it here.
Page two.
Yeah, in the, the big, the big book we sent out Friday, it's actually on page one thirty-nine, it's the total operating, it's twenty-one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand and eleven dollars. So the capital is close, but not quite the same, up to the same amount as the operating expenditures on a whole. And that's whole city.
Thank you.
Great. You're welcome.
Other questions, council members? Seeing none, thank you very much, Mr. Ingram. I will close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, adopting the final operating budget for fiscal year beginning October one, 2024, and ending September thirtieth, 2025, and the capital improvement budget. Given notice of the public hearings thereon, authorizing the city manager to issue such instructions as are necessary to achieve and accomplish the service programs. Authorizing the city manager or the finance director to transfer monies among the departments and programs within any fund. Authorizing the city manager or the finance director upon receipt of a donation or grant to appropriate send funds in the expenditure line item of the program as requested by the donor-granter, providing a severability clause, effective date, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to approve the budget on first reading?
I move to adopt the ordinance fifteen seventy-one, adopting the fiscal year 2025 annual budget on first reading.
Second. Discussion of the motion?
Of comment.
Councilmember Schizler?
Just for everybody's edification, the, we just, we discussed the property taxes and everybody should know that that's just a portion of the revenues that are necessary in order to carry the budget. We have the enterprise funds, we have TIF funds, we have CIT, and it all comes into play. So it's, it's not our property taxes that are funding this entire thing. So this is why we're, we're able to keep the property taxes at the level that they are year after year like this. Property values go down, that could change. Other, these other, these other taxing sources dry up, like CIT, that could change. That would be, that could be a problem. So I just wanted to, the other thing was the reserves. Give yourselves credit, the whole, everybody. This is building efficiencies where you guys have done things smarter, better, and more efficient to allow us to have these funds to offset any kind of future revenue requirements. But no, it's a good budget. Thank you.
Other comments?
Just a couple of quick things. I don't want to belabor the point here, but I know we've had a couple of years where we have increased water and garbage. Several years in a row, we have done that. It's less of an increase this year than it's been in the past. I think we had a year or two of ten percent increases, so we're down to five percent. I'd love to tell the public that this is done, we're over, we're through with increases for a while, but I can't pledge that. I don't think anybody here can pledge that. And so the water and the sanitation are both enterprise funds, which means they operate independent of the rest of the budget. So they have to generate enough revenue to offset the cost of providing that service. Most of the increases have been driven by hard costs that we're passing through. The cost of treating our wastewater, which we pay the city of Tampa to do, and the cost of dumping our trash at the waste-to-energy facility on Falkenburg that we pay the county to do. Both of those costs have gone up exponentially. I think that was a thirty-one percent or something at the incinerator this year, or twenty-one percent or something. These are, these are huge increases. I talked to Mayor Castor last week about the wastewater and after what we could do, you know, to, you know, is there an end in sight to this? And unfortunately, a lot of the costs that we're absorbing are hard costs associated with them having to do some infrastructure improvements in the city of Tampa, to the tune of hundreds of millions of dollars of infrastructure improvements to treat all this wastewater. So I don't, I don't know if there's any end in sight. We're kind of a middle person in this. To get the cost from the county, we have to pass it along. We get the cost from the city of Tampa, and we have to pass it along. So I don't see any signs of us building our own wastewater treatment facility or building our own incinerators. So I think we're probably going to be kind of held hostage to this. And, you know, there, there's some good news, depending on your perspective, is both the county is making significant improvements to the waste-to-energy facility. They're using some of this money to make efficiency improvements, which is good. And Tampa's making improvements to do a better job of releasing less discharge into the bay of wastewater. So the progress that's being made by those two groups are good, but we're feeling the brunt of it in our water bill. So the other thing, real quick, you hear us talk about unassigned fund balance, that's, we used to talk about that in terms of reserves. There was a time not long ago when we had less than a million dollars in unassigned fund balance in the city of Temple Terrace. We set a goal of twenty percent of our operating budget would be, we would set that much aside. That seemed like an unrealistic goal when we set it. We were nowhere near that. Every year, we failed, but we kept with the goal. Now we have exceeded that target. In fact, we, this year's budget, we upped the goal to thirty percent or so.
We're proposing twenty-five percent.
We're proposing twenty-five. So we're upping our goal. So our reserves are healthy and they're, they're staying healthy, but we are spending down some of the money in excess of twenty-five percent. Things like the park that's proposed in the downtown area, some of these big capital projects, that's where the money's coming from, so as Mr. Ingram said, we can avoid debt. And the last and final thing, and then I promise I'll be quiet, is that the downtown CRA we've been talking about since long before I came around, as this project's been going on for over twenty years, and we have finally reached the point where the tax revenue from the CRA, from our community redevelopment area, is actually paying us something in addition, it's paying the debt service and then we have some money left over. And so it's actually paying its way. So some of those funds are also being directed at improvements in the CRA, like the park and the pedestrian master plan. So that project has actually tipped the scales and is finally starting to produce money instead of cost money. So there's a lot of good news here, and it's easy for that to get lost when you get the water bill and you go, oh my God, they went up again. But in the larger scheme of things, there's some good news. And if you look at the TRIM notice, where we are in relation to Tampa and Hillsborough County and the community, we're actually, in my opinion, we're in a good spot. I mean, we're not the cheapest place to live in terms of taxes, but we're not the most expensive either. And I will put our city services up against anybody else's in the region. So it's a pretty good place to be. I'm sorry. Okay, any other comments on the motion?
All those in favor say aye. Oh, we need a roll call vote. Mr. Schoen, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yay.
Councilman Chambers?
Yes.
Mayor Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Schizler?
Yes.
Councilmember Abel?
Yes.
Good. And the budget is adopted unanimously on first reading and will appear for a second reading and public hearing on Tuesday, September the seventeenth. Next is, should be much easier, a resolution approving the city's manager's approving, resolution approving the city manager approval of a minor modification to building elevations, the master plan of development for two parcels located at one zero zero two four Davis Road. This goes back to the last hearing we had concerning the building elevations, changes and so forth and all that. Mr. Bia, explain.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The mayor was just stating, back in, on July sixteenth, the council held a public hearing on the proposed rezoning to a planned development for a project at Davis Road for twenty-eight homes. As part of the planned development requirement, the developers are supposed to submit their proposed elevations. At the time, the developer, who's, who's here actually in the room, if you have any questions, was looking at the marketplace and thinking of different products and did not have the full gamut, was considering what was presented at the time were two-story homes. And he was considering something that would be architecturally similar, but might be, for example, a one-story structure. The council expressed some reservation about that and asked for, approved it with the condition that they come back once they have their full elevation package. That is what has been submitted to you in your backup this evening. The, under the city's land development code, the city manager has the ability to approve minor modifications. So I have tentatively approved their, their planned development in complete, in sort of complete stature here, with the understanding that if you had concerns, you could obviously, you could affirm that approval or you could deny the approval, it's really up to you. So that's what's here before you this evening.
Very good. Other members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council member questions? Very good. Is there a motion to approve the city's manager's approval of these minor modifications to the building elevations?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, no nays. Thank you, Mr. Bia.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Next is a public hearing and second reading of ordinance fifteen sixty-nine, amending code section fourteen dash seventy-two entitled Local Business Tax. That will open the public hearing. And Finance Operations Manager, Damian Devey, is here to explain. Hello.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Ross and city council. On the first reading of this ordinance, you guys asked for a presentation with some highlights and examples. So the, first of all, the business tax receipts, which we will shorten to BTR. On the current fee schedule, we have, it's been over fifty years. We've had minor updates to it throughout the years. Currently, there's three hundred and fifty-nine main categories and three hundred and twenty subcategories. Along with that, we have some obsolete things and some redundant categories. We also have very narrow and specific categories that will do not allow for any kind of growth among the business community. To kind of give you a demographic of what we faced this current year in 2024, we have issued thirteen, one thousand three hundred and sixty-one tax receipts. Now, some of the businesses have been currently issued multiple tax receipts based upon how our schedule is built at the moment. So we only have really a total business of one thousand two hundred and twenty-three. And the breakdown is there of home businesses inside and then outside city businesses. Those are like your insurance companies that have an agent here and that's working. We have a total amount of categories of three hundred and fifty-nine, but we're actually only using a hundred and twenty-three of those. And of that, a hundred and sixty businesses have been placed into the uncategorized business due to the fact that they don't really fit into anything that's out there right now. So of those BTRs that were issued in 2024, as we stated, there was only a hundred and twenty-three different categories. This is the nine categories that were used the most. It represents about seventy-five percent of the BTRs that were issued. And then, of course, the hundred and sixty that were unclassified. So tonight, I'm going to briefly discuss these four topics, the updates and changes, the impacts on the overall utilized categories that we have, and the impact on some specific categories, and then examples of those, like was requested. So the updates and changes is that we condensed, we condensed and broadened the categories up. We simplified from three hundred and fifty-nine main categories down to only four main categories. Then we reduced those three hundred and twenty subcategories down to sixty-two. We also have a lot of different add-ons because some businesses have, you know, multiple things within themselves. We could have a store that has a little restaurant inside of it. So those are different add-ons that could be used. We reduced that from forty-two down to twenty-seven, with ten of those being able to be used amongst many businesses. And then we went ahead and simplified the inventory and square foot fee schedules. This is an example of how we condensed. Currently, right now, we have these four categories that are pretty much the same things, books, magazines, publications, newspapers. By the new proposed schedule, we're going to just put them all into this one broad category. So that'll help to simplify things. For the four main categories, we're going to have a different way of how their, it's how their fee is actually structured and calculated. So category one would be based on units other than personnel. Category two would be based on square footage. Category three would be on inventory, and four would be on personnel. And then under those, each of those four main categories, you'll have the different subcategories that can fall under that, that heading. For the add-ons, we do have a fifth category that we have proposed that will be there for only when it's applicable. So an add-on, like I said earlier, would be if they have something, you know, within their business that could be used. Instead of issuing multiple BTRs, like how we're doing right now, we would be just doing an add-on for the one piece that they have. For instance, the restaurant inside of a retail business. Instead of issuing them a business retail. business, instead of issuing them a business retail BTR, and then a restaurant one with their different items on there. So, ten, you'll notice, there's only ten that really kind of fit all of them, and that's where we've reduced it down to. For the inventory schedule, right now, we currently have eighteen levels, and when the change between those levels is about a fifty-one percent change, we've reduced that down, made it a little bit more equitable, so now the proposed level is just three levels, and the difference between those three levels is only six percent, that they will see a difference. Now, our utilized categories, the average change over all of our utilized categories will be just seven dollars and thirty-four cents of an increase per business tax receipt. That is not including this, any of the square footage categories, we had to pull that out. So, as you see, seventy-six categories saw no changes, ten will have reduced fees, and thirty-four will have increased fees. Now, the square footage category, we have been currently, on this current schedule, charging two different types of fees. One category is receiving the half cent per square foot, and two other categories have been receiving this, this five per square foot up to a hundred thousand, and then point oh three per square foot over that. It really makes for a big difference in how we're calculating. We want to make that more equitable, and since now we are trying to put everybody under the same category umbrella, we would like to have them all be charged under the same rate. So, moving, it's going to affect seven businesses. It will be a manufacturer, a service operation processing center, those will get moved from the higher rate down to the half cent rate. That will be an estimated decrease of fourteen thousand dollars in revenue on the known parameters that we have at the moment. However, it should be offset with others. The inventory, we'll see an average decrease of fifty-nine point forty-one in fees per business, and the personnel, depending on where they fall within the personnel, the three levels, the zero to three employees, we'll just be doing fourteen dollars and forty-five cents flat, so not much of an increase there. From four to twenty-five, no change, and then if they have more than twenty-five employees, they're going to now have a decrease of thirty-five dollars and thirty-one cents. For the units, this is an example of the changes that are going on. In the current schedule, we had multiple add-ons that were going on there. So, for a hotel motel with twenty rooms, their base fee was the fifty-seven eighty-seven, and then they had to pay one dollar and forty-three cents over six rooms. So, now, with the proposed schedule, we made it a little simplified. It is now going to be a same base fee, but instead of doing over six rooms, it's just going to be per room. This way, we can have a charge of per room similar to everyone, because we had multiple categories that some were six, over six rooms, some were over three rooms, some over two, so this just kind of simplifies the calculation for us. The inventory, this example here is a grocery store. We're going to assume that they have eighty-five, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of inventory. Currently, they have their base fee, plus they have their fee for inventory. Then, we have, we pulled a couple of them, and they average about nine different add-ons. So, that's multiple business tax receipts that they are receiving as add-ons. In the proposed schedule, we will be doing the same base fee. The inventory, we have that shifted onto the new schedule, and then they will only have to do the four add-ons, and those add-ons are for things that they'll need state licenses for, so we will have to keep those. Here's a personnel example. So, let's say we have an exterminator company, and he only has three employees. We have the base fee of thirty-four seventy-two, and then zero for personnel at the moment because it's the zero to three. We now have, they got shifted into a broader category, which was under eighty-two, eighty-one oh two for a base fee, so you'll see a little bit of an increase there, and then the fourteen dollars and forty-five cents for personnel. So, you'll see there is a little bit of an increase, but it's not by much. So, just as a recap, we had, between our categories, subcategories and add-ons, we have six hundred and seventy-nine options that we have to go through with each application that we're getting to figure out where does this business fit in. And proposed, now we will just be looking at four categories, sixty-two subcategories, and ten add-ons for only a seventy-six piece, so that's a reduction of six hundred and three categories. So, it'll be much easier to navigate through. The current levels in the inventory, eighteen versus the three proposed, and then the fee structures, the two different fee structures for the square foot business, and then the equitable fee structure would be better for all. So, for the revenue, you guys asked for a bottom line impact on revenue. This was very challenging to answer. With the system we have, we don't necessarily have all the current updated information needed to calculate this accurately. So, we're estimating, based upon the numbers that we had, an increase of about two percent overall. Now, if we look at the worst-case scenario, everybody jumps in on the, on the decreases. We don't anticipate this, but it is a possible decrease of about six percent. So, we're looking at a range from an increase of two percent down to a decrease of six percent. With these proposed changes and the new system in place, we will be able to update all the business information, clean up our database, and this way, about a year or so, we'll be able to have a much clearer picture of where we stand. We'll have a more equitable approach that's not only easier for us to manage, but it's also going to be much easier for our public to use. So, I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Devey. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this? Seeing none, councilmembers questions? Yes, councilmember Schizler.
Will we be, have, will your department have the opportunity to audit existing businesses going forward to make sure that everybody's being done properly, whether, good or bad? Will we, will we, will we have an internal program designed for that going forward? I don't want to become, you know, the, 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 the revenue police, but, I mean, somebody could be misclassified. We wouldn't know it until we looked at what they were doing.
Absolutely. That is actually a very big part of why we are getting this new system. This first year, it will be that we are looking at every single application coming in. So, everyone will have to go on, establish an account, and when that comes through, we will be looking at them, making sure they're fitting within the right category, that there's not a category that would suit them better. So, as they're doing that, once we get them set up in the category that they are in correctly, then moving forward, when they go to renew, everything will stay the same, they'll just be able to hit a link and be able to renew and put in any changes, and the fee structure behind that, we'll be able to update any information if something changes.
Just out of curiosity, what was the most bizarre classification that we had on the books?
Honestly, the one that kills me is the hundred and sixty businesses that we have as unclassified, but we do have, we did have some categories for...
Gun catcher or...
Yeah, there are some weird ones in there. We had a millinery, we had... Yeah, we, we've had quite a few different ones that we kind of had to laugh at, and we understand that they were, they were good fifty years ago, but I haven't seen a business like that in a while.
Thank you.
I do.
Oh, councilmember Fernandez.
So, my first question is, we're, we're looking at getting a enterprise system for the city. How does this, the business tax administration fit into that system?
That's a very good question. That is part of the reason why we're wanting to do this. At this moment, our current system is not, is not able to handle the, the changes and able to update us and get us things accurately. So, with this system that we're moving on to, it is going to be operating outside of our ERP, ERP system at the moment, and we will be doing data entry into it. That means that, no matter what happens with the ERP and how we change that, we will be able to continue to function. They also have the availability to integrate in, and we have it in the contract that if they are not able to integrate in, we can go ahead and then part our ways.
Okay, so, it's, I, my concern, I just don't want to make this more complicated, we're trying to simplify, so, so a couple more questions, and with regard to the categories and the add-ons and the rates that, that we've created, have you looked at, I don't want to say, we don't want to be worried that we're exactly like another jurisdiction, but at the same time, in the past, we've had a lot of comments that it's hard to do business in Temple Terrace and, and things like that. So, if I'm, if I'm a business in Temple Terrace, am I going to find this comparable to nearby jurisdictions and easy to work?
So, I believe so. I believe that this is a very good step in, in the right direction. Now, everyone kind of handles them differently. We did do some studies, and we have looked at all of the different ordinances from around the area, even in other places in Florida, to kind of see how it, how it holds up with it. Now, with our new system, we are going to be online-based, which is huge for them, because right now, it's paper. And so, with this, they'll be able to go in there, they will have their own way of getting into their log-on, they can see a flow, so they'll be able, the business owner will be able to see exactly where they are in the process, we'll be able to communicate back and forth with them. So, it's going to be a lot more business-friendly, which I know is something that we always want to work towards. So, that was very big with us when we were looking for a program, was to make sure that this was a business-friendly and a user-friendly site.
So, then, so, my last question, as you were establishing the categories and rates, you did, how did you go about that process?
We did a very, very large flow chart as to figuring out what categories are they right now. Are, it starts first with how are they calculated? And that's where we kind of came into those categories of units, inventory, square foot, and personnel. So, that's how our current one is built. It's just very, very large. So, with that, with being able to kind of first condense them into that category, then we started looking at the cost. So, we had maybe twenty of them that were being charged the same base fee. So, then, we started to condense it down from there. Okay, which ones can we roll into one? Retail was pretty much all being charged the same base fee, so why not just have a retail category versus a shop for each? We had a category for each individual type of shop. Same thing with professionals. We had every single professional and profession out there listed, whereas they're all being charged the same fee, why not roll that into, you know, medical personnel and make it a little simpler to, to use and go forward?
Thank you.
Other questions, councilmembers? Councilmember Chambers.
If, if this is approved, when does it start?
So, it goes into effect at the beginning of our fiscal year. We are ready to roll if this is approved. We can start implementation as soon as we, as soon as we get the okay. So, we have been preparing for it and getting ready for it, and as long as we have the blessing to move forward, we're going to start working on getting that to go live so that we can be ready by October first.
Okay, is that when businesses sign up with us, October one every year?
Yes, it go, it ranges from the October first to the September thirtieth.
Okay, thank you. One more, real quick. So, with going down from six hundred and seventy-nine categories to what you proposed, and you're thinking a six percent decrease in revenue, was there any, is there any going to be any expenditure decrease in the amount of Tylenol you guys buy?
Numerous, so...
That's what I thought.
At the moment, we have brought two employees back from retirement to assist. So, we have two employees that have come back to work with us because it is so cumbersome to figure this out. So, yes, this system will definitely make it easier for us to train new personnel to assist. We will be able to assist the businesses much quicker, and the decrease is mainly from the square footage.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other questions, councilmembers? I have a few, Ms. Devey, so, I know that will shock you. So, a, a couple questions. You said retail, you know, I, first of all, this is good. We've, we've needed to work on this for years, but as you well know firsthand, it's sticky. And every time you get under the hood and start tinkering with it, you're like regretting that you ever opened the hood, right? So, there's probably no perfect system. However, clarify for me when you just answered councilmember Fernandez about the retail space.
Sure.
So, suppose that there are two retail stores, and they both have a thousand square feet in a strip center along Fifty-Sixth Street. Am I understanding correctly that, okay, they, they both have a thousand square feet, and they both have six employees, so their business tax is equal regardless of what they sell or what their annual revenues or sales are?
No, so for retail, they are based upon inventory. So, your inventory is what's going to drive that. So, the more inventory you have, of course, the more you will be paying. Their base fee is the same. So, if you're a retail store, your base fee will be the same, but that inventory is where it'll change. That's your moving variable.
Okay, and that's, that's what I wanted to clarify, because you can have a thousand square feet and you sell, you know, comic books, and your revenue's two hundred thousand dollars a year gross, and then you could have a jewelry store that your revenue is twenty million dollars a year gross, so there is a difference. Okay. So, I know you must have done some modeling in order to come up with some revenue predictions of up to a positive two to a negative six, so we have, you, you had to do some modeling in order to come up with that. In the modeling, did you notice any disparate impact between the larger businesses versus the smaller? And the thing that struck me is in your presentation, the larger facilities that have over a hundred thousand square feet of space, in the new way of calculating their taxes, it seems like this is a beneficial change to them. But, the example you gave of the small exterminator with three employees, I noticed that their increases were over a hundred percent, it was more than doubled, and now the numbers are not huge, but it's still more than double for a small company, whereas a large industrial, you know, in, in the industrial park or in telecom, looked like it was more beneficial to them. Did you, did you pursue that modeling to determine if there's an equitable impact on various sizes of business?
Yes, I did absolutely look at that. The, looking at the square footage, that is mainly because of the warehouse category. When we went ahead and approved that to be at that lower rate, now we're having to push that out to the rest of anyone else who is under the square footage, which is those two categories, the service and processing centers and manufacturers. So, yes, those did see a large decrease. They are bigger businesses, but it is to make sure that we are equitable, and that is one of our criterias when we do make any changes, that we have to make sure that we are equitable amongst all of the businesses. Now, the smaller, the exterminator, prior to that was, yes, it, it is a large increase. That is, I, I picked, for the example, one of the largest increases that we would see based upon the size to show you the, the change. Most of them will only see, like, the average of a seven-dollar increase, it will not be that drastic. So, that was just one that we could see there. We could go back to not charging anything for zero to three employees, that's really where the main part of it was, it's just that fourteen dollars that it increased. But, we do not have any exterminators right now in the ones where it did jump. We, I also looked at, how many people do we, how many businesses do we have in each of these categories? So, some of these categories, we need to have on the books, but it doesn't mean we necessarily have them. So, at the moment, we do not have any that that would affect, so all of our businesses will see very minimal changes based upon the information we have, because once we get updated information, we'll be able to see from there.
Okay, two more, two more, real quick. You kind of answered this one already, I just want to flesh this out a little further. So, I, I am, the longer I'm involved in government service, the less likely I am to ask you, did we look at what other cities did? Because the more I realize that, that they, most of the time, don't know as much as we do, or they're, you know, I'm not sure we ought to do what they're doing, so. But, I, I see a potential threat here in this, and that, you know, the, Tallahassee loves to preempt stuff, and if you have the same business all over the state of Florida, and you're paying a completely different tax structure here and in Tampa and Hillsborough and Miami and Fort Lauderdale, you know, you get what I'm saying. So, I've got twenty stores, and I've got twenty very different taxing schemes. I'm not suggesting that we should go out and strive to be uniform if we've got something better, but what, but it is important that we're at least in the same ballpark. But what, but it is important that we're at least in the same ballpark, right? We can't be sitting in Tampa Stadium and they're all over here. So are we using the same general types of schemes and thought process at least so that we're not like an outlier?
Yes, that is one of the things that when I pulled all of the different ordinances from around the state, I kind of saw, how do they do their structure? We had quite a few that had a million categories just like us. And it seems as though everyone kind of had the same categories, like they all bought a template. But there are other ones that have based it just the, the new proposed way. And when I saw that in a couple of different ones and I saw that it seemed to work out much easier and they had a much simpler interface on their, their website, it seemed like that was a good way to go. Now, we did do the impact study back when we were looking at the warehouse category to see where do we fall amongst our, our neighbors? And we are not the highest, but we're not also the lowest. So we're just kind of right in that median air, area. And yes, businesses will pay drastic changes going from different cities and different counties. That is something that we saw just within, um, the one warehouse that we were looking at, that there are caps in certain places and then there are some who pay a lot in others.
Okay. So I, I don't know the answer to this, I'm kind of embarrassed that I don't, but what is the, because when we were taxing businesses now, it's not like we're just contemplating beginning to tax them. So what is the appeals process if you, as Councilmember Schuster says, you know, you go and you, you know, you visit a business and you say, well, you know, you're doing this and this and this and this, this is how we're going to categorize you, your tax bill is X. What do they do to appeal? They just call you and jump up and down or is there, I mean, I know with property tax values, there's a value adjustment board, but that doesn't fit this. So what is that process for appeals?
They would definitely contact us and ask, they could ask us questions as to why they were put into a certain category and we would go over that with them and find out what is their, how does their business actually work? Is it something that's small that maybe just needs to be handled as a simple add-on or is it something that we need to make sure that we are correctly charging them? So they have the availability to give us a call and we can review anything. Like I stated, they, we will be reviewing every single business this year that is part of our audit, uh, so that we can make sure that we will have the correct business put into the, the right category.
So that is likely to draw some appeals?
It could very well.
Do you get appeals now under the current structure?
Nope.
Okay.
I have another question.
Yes, Councilmember Fernandez?
For the city attorney, actually. Should we have something, a policy that actually gives a more formal process for when a business does not agree? Because it's one thing, they can call the city and they can discuss, but ultimately at the end of the day, if the business doesn't agree with the assessment the city has made, what would their process be? I, I get where you're going. What would the process be when that situation occurs? And would we need to, to do something more formal?
If, if you wanted to have a more extensive process, then you, we would have to create one.
But we're not required to have one.
We're not required to have one. But eh, in addition to discussing, for someone, a business who was not happy or, or confused by this or something, in addition to speaking with staff and finance, they can't always talk to the city manager since, since he oversees them, he would be the last word.
I, I would just, this is Mr. Bia's wheelhouse, not mine, so I don't have the authority nor the inclination to get behind the wheel here, that's his thing. It seems to me like if you're going to do a citywide audit of everybody and change the whole tax code around and you're going to audit all the businesses and place them into the new appropriate, that we should probably be ready for some appeals and maybe have a policy that dictates what we do. Not that you won't do the right thing, but if they just call you, we're just opening ourselves up to, to allegations that, well, I, I got one answer and I called with the same set of facts and I talked to another person, I got a different answer. It's just very subjective or appearing very subjective, even if it's not, the, the perception is that it, so there should probably be, I mean, if you get a parking ticket, there's an appeals process. You get a speeding ticket, there's an appeals process. So whatever, that may, maybe that's an internal process, internal review board of employee, I don't know what that looks like. I would think simpler the better, we don't need to stand up another board to, but maybe an internal employee group or something that hears these?
So we'll take a look at that.
Okay.
Chatting here with the city attorney to see if there's anything, the existing ordinances that we could basically use as a model for that. We'll take a look.
All right, council members, any other questions? I've lost where we are here. Okay, anything else, Amy, did we miss anything?
No, I don't know.
In that case, I will close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of an ordinance if she's still awake.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending the Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances, Chapter fourteen, Section fourteen dash seventy-two, Schedule of Local Business Taxes to be Paid, Tax Levied Payment Required and Amounts to be Paid, Providing for Severability, Providing for Codification, Repealing All Ordinances or Parts of Ordinances in Conflict Here With and Providing an Effective Date.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there a motion?
Ordinance, I move to approve ordinance fifteen sixty-nine, amending code section fourteen dash seventy-two, local business tax upon second, second hearing, um, second reading.
Second. Motion and a second, discussion?
Comment.
Comments? Councilmember Schuster?
I'm, I'm the one who requested the additional inform, or part of additional information. Uh, seven years ago, when I decided I wanted to run for council, one of the, one of the big things that I wanted to do was to streamline the business, um, aspect of dealing with the city. And, uh, it took a while, but this is, this is good. This is very, very good. I, I know in previous employment that I had to deal with the City of Temple Terrace in business licenses for a manufacturer with a hundred fifty thousand square foot and I could not calculate what it was, predict what it was going to be. Okay? So eh, this is, this condenses it, makes it more efficient, makes it easier for businesses saying, this is what I'm going to have to do if I want to come work, if I want to be in Temple Terrace. So, uh, kudos to you guys, you did a great job. Thank you very much for the presentation and I heartily endorse this.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no nays. Thank you very much for all your hard work. The ordinance is adopted on second reading. Next is a first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter eighteen of the City of Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances entitled Parks, Recreation, Leisure Services and Cultural Affairs. Leisure Services Director Carl Langfield is here to explain. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council, Carl Langfield, Leisure Services Director. I'm here tonight, uh, for a first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter eighteen of the city's Code of Ordinances for, uh, Parks, Recreation, Leisure Services and Cultural Affairs. Uh, earlier this year, a comprehensive review and update of Chapter eighteen of the City Code of Ordinances was completed. Uh, it had been many years since this, uh, code has last seen a review or an update. Uh, the process involved taking our code, uh, looking at what is still relevant and what needs updating and comparing it to city codes from City of Tampa, Hillsborough County, Plant City and other ordinance, and other areas in the region. Uh, the update provided for cleanup, cleanup of parks, park hours and provided additional sections to address camping, drones and aviation, golfing and animals in parks. The, a final review of the ordinance, uh, did reveal one deficiency that still exists and requires a piece of cleanup, uh, with regards to RVs and those types of vehicles uh, and their presence in the parks. Uh, what was put into this prohibits those types of vehicles in the parks. Um, it just needs to be cleaned up a little bit to address, uh, those vehicles in the parks for camping or overnight, uh, overnight purposes. The ordinance that has been presented to you has been reviewed by our police department, has been reviewed by our legal department, um, and will be back in front of you for a second reading on September seventeenth. I stand for any questions you may have about any of the updates or clarifications made to the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Langfield. Other members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Mrs. Rennie? Carl, we have some public comment. Good evening, yes ma'am, just-
More of a question?
Okay, well, I know you know the drill, we need your, your name and city of residence.
I'm Net Rennie, ninety-five twelve with Little Ridge Drive. I have a question about dogs and such. We're having a lot of dog ditching out at the park, at the Temple Terrace Dog Park and, I mean, more than one. They'll just tie them out there and what can be done with that? Because apparently parks and recreation have something to do with monitoring that, if I understand correctly? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rennie. Are there other members of the public who wish to comment on the ordinance? Seeing none. Councilmembers, questions for Mr. Langfield? Councilmember Schuster?
Yes. What parks or public areas are going to be covered by this? Will this include Little League fields? Will this include three oh one? Will this include Fairmount Circle? This is, you know, this-
This, this includes all areas listed in our park inventory, which does include the youth sports complex, which includes the Ridgeville baseball fields, the, the fields behind the family complexes and all the parks, River Hills Park, Rotary Park, Ben Lomond, all of the neighborhood parks throughout the city.
What about Riverside? Right, right, the, the new, the partial C?
Yes, that, that will be covered as well.
Is that in there now?
Eh, that would, that is considered a park now.
Okay, good, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez?
So, um, there's some verbiage that has been added about playing, uh, you need to have a permit to play in an organized sport league on a designated field. Uh, but I just want to clarify, like for those, that would not, none of this will prohibit the kids who get together and go up to the baseball fields or someplace and play like a pickup game of baseball or wiffle ball or anything, it's only for organized.
Absolutely not. This, this in no way affects neighborhood kids getting together and going out and playing a game of touch flag football, um, playing a game such as that. What this does do is address situations that we've run into frequently over the years where we will have a group of a hundred people show up and they're all in uniforms and they have referees and they're, they're playing a full-on soccer league on one of our fields on a Sunday afternoon. Um, we've approached these, these organizations in the past, some of them we've brought in and they now have permits and play, uh, sanctioned events on our fields under approved permit at the approved times. Others have gone in and, and looked for fields to play elsewhere because they did not want to, to obtain a permit from us. But this in no way affects kids who want to come out and utilize the fields and play on them.
Okay.
Other questions, council members? Thank you very much, Mr. Langfield. And so, Mr. Bia, would you, Mr. Langfield, somebody respond to Mrs. Rennie's issue? It's really not germane to the ordinance we're discussing, but I'm sure she'd like to-
I said it was in reference to the dog park?
Yeah, you don't have to do that now, we're talking about the ordinance now, but yeah, thank you. I will close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, amending Chapter eighteen of the City of Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances, Parks, Recreation, Leisure Services and Cultural Affairs, under Article two, Public Conduct in Parks, by revising Section eighteen dash twenty-six, boating, Section eighteen dash twenty-eight, games, et cetera, Section eighteen dash thirty-three, times of closing, exceptions, activity, Section eighteen dash thirty-six, merchandising, vending, peddling, et cetera, Section eighteen dash thirty-nine, alcoholic beverages, Section eighteen dash forty-one, camping, creating Section eighteen dash forty-two, aircraft, parachuting and drones, creating Section eighteen dash forty-three, golfing and cre- creating Section eighteen dash forty-four, animals, providing for authority to codify, providing for applicability and severability, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict here with and providing for an effective date.
Good, thank you. Madam Clerk, is there a motion?
Yes. I'm sorry, uh, move to approve on first reading an ordinance amending Chapter eighteen of the City of Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances entitled Parks, Recreation, Leisure Services and Cultural Affairs.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no nays. This ordinance will appear for a second reading in public hearing on Tuesday, September the seventeenth. Thank you, Mr. Langfield. Is there any carryover council business from previous meetings? Okay, seeing none. New business in board reports?
I have.
Councilmember Fernandez?
So I have a question for the city staff, the city manager regarding the flooding that we had and I, I know we all got a lot of comments about, uh, the, how much water was in the streets and, and in the sidewalks and pretty much everywhere. But so I just wanted to ask if you, the city staff, you can kind of explain why we had so much water and what, how we're addressing it. Um, I mean, I know why we had so much water, it was a lot of rain, but that's not what I meant, but why it was backed up so unusually, so.
Okay, absolutely.
Mr. Bia?
If I could, uh, ask Mr. Warnefield to come up, Director of Public Works, to the podium. I think he'd be best suited to address this question.
Good evening, Mr. Warnefield.
So the rain event that occurred on Sunday was, um, significant in, in a short time period. The stormwater ponds that, that we treat the stormwater, and when I say treat, we allow it to absorb in the earth, that's how we treat. Um, they were not at capacity, but they were three-quarter of capacity. We treat and then we attenuate water where we pass it on to another pond to treat. We keep passing till it gets to the river. The outfall structures from these ponds, with the flow that occurred, the outfall structures, um, received debris, yard clippings, leaves, um, palm fronds, newspapers, I saw a lot of newspapers on one of them today. Um, I mean, we do have, I do have a section of photos here that I can share to the council, uh, share to the public. When, when the facilities manager and myself were in on Sunday, um, we noticed a lot of debris in places that typically we don't have debris, but the amount of rain that we had, there was mulch, uh, mulching locations that got moved into the ponds. It, it overwhelmed the system. We are working, the city engineer and I had a conversation this afternoon, the Fifty-Sixth Street and Bull, and Bush, um, that's FDOT stormwater, so we're going to share the videos and the information we have with FDOT tomorrow, um, to see if they can, you know, give us a response on what they're, what they're seeing and what they've seen in their pipes. Would the council like to see some of the, I mean, basically what we've done is we've gone out to these locations and, and I've taken photos of the debris that's on top of these outfall structures that caused some of the backups. Gillette and White Way had a significant amount of water. That pond took everything that it could, um, and then its surface flushed the rest of it onto Gillette and then through the Jacqueline Harbor neighborhood, um, down those streets, so.
Is there anything that we need to do in order to, I, I don't want to say keep it from happening again, we can't predict necessarily how much rain we're going to get at one time, but is there something that needs to happen on, on the city's end with clearing out any, like jetting the drains or, um, clearing out the debris, if there's debris built up or any, any kind of maintenance or changes that we would need to make in order to alleviate this in the future?
So the stormwater program does have a maintenance piece of it. Um, the city also has CDS, the, the debris collection, um, stations throughout the city. Those are cleaned annually, um, for, and I'll use Debbie as an example, Hurricane Debbie when it came through. The stormwater staff have a checklist, um, because there was a chance of a heavy rainfall. They went through, they verified all the, the debris was clear from the stormwater drains, the inlet boxes, the, the ditch bottom inlets, as much as they, all of that they could in the short amount of time from the activation until, um, the storm passed. Those are routine as they occur weekly or, or even monthly. The staff go out, I asked the staff that cleared the one hundred and thirteenth and Gillette stormwater pond today, when's the, I said, when's the last time you guys have been here? And they said last Thursday or Friday. So again, those locations were checked just days prior to, but they received so much debris from, from the, the community, they just became overwhelmed and they backed up. So the photos that they have up, so this is the, uh, this is in the community off a hundred, or I'm sorry, White Way and, uh, Gillette, this is where the rain shouldn't have went. Um, it, it came out the access gates into the community and you can see the debris on the bottom of the gate there. There's a berm on the pond that would have normally prevented this in a typical rain, but unfortunately it, it decided to vent itself. This is looking east towards Gillette. Um, you can see in the upper left corner there where there's a debris pile. Um, that debris was from the pond, that, that came off of White Way's collection system, um, through the neighborhood and it passed in there. in there, and then that's where it stopped. The ring that you, if you go back there a sec. The ring that you see in the lower right there, so we had the rain on the first, and then we had another rain from the first until today at noon. That lower ring on the right side is the ring from the last rain. So the water got up again, but it did not leave, it did not leave the pond. So you go to the next one. So this is the outfall structure clear of debris, but you can see the debris outside of that metal ring, the sediment, the turbidity barrier, and it's yellow in the background. That was a recommendation that the streets manager and the engineer put together prior to me, and it works on normal rainfall. It, it was overcome by the amount of debris and the amount of water, and allowed to, I think if you go to the next one, you'll see where it was clogged. Yep, so there's what it looked like this morning when we went out and looked at it. So it was blocked, and that's what it would look like on Sunday when the rain fell. So this was taken Sunday, and you can see the amount of debris that's on, that should be grass where it's brown in the upper left ring around the pond. That, that should all be green, and that's all debris, and the pond's full of debris. So, as that second rain that came through at some point, most of that is gone. The pond is clear, the water's clear. So that debris has passed through the system. I don't know.
Oh, Councilmember Fernandez still has the floor.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Then Councilmember Schuster.
For everybody, myself included, vacation. The runoff from this should have gone where? Into the, how does the, the stormwater system permeate, and where does it ultimately end up going?
So the inlets, the street inlets and the ditch bottom inlets, they carry the water to the, the ponds where we treat it. It's a series of ponds, a series of pipes through the system, which eventually gets it to the river. So, example, the White Way and Gillette Pond, all that water travels north through Gillette. It goes through a piping system from the pond there to the ponds at 113th and Gillette. It leaves those ponds, goes north to the ponds by the Greco School. From there, it travels under Fowler through piping system, and then the outfall structure is in the river just north of Fowler.
Is that a force main, or is it gravity?
It's gravity.
Oh, gravity.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So nothing, nothing, nothing goes south towards the redevelopment area?
Sure, so.
Well, I mean, from, from the nor, I mean, which way is it going? Is it, is it, there's, there's the stuff at 56th and Bush, where would that go? The, the, the rainwater, the stormwater from that area?
So that would travel south, 56th Street to the river.
So do we have like a continental divide? Which way, where, where about is that?
It's, it's all gravity, and it's all based on elevations, and it's based on where it goes from one pond to the next, or where the pipe takes it to the gravity side to alleviate itself.
Yeah, well, what about the non-city-owned ponds? Like, there's two on Je, on Jennifer Drive that is, it's not going to take much for that to overflow back in, into the house, but it's not, the city doesn't own them. They're owned by the individuals. So, I mean, there, there's pretty, pretty deep right now. And yesterday, as of yesterday, not, not today, but yesterday, there was standing water in the street under the culvert, the, the inlet. So I was just curious, is, that spills over into Fowler Avenue?
Okay, so if it spills over into Fowler, then it'll end up in the, in the drainage wells along Fowler, which again, they'll work their way to the river.
Into the river. So every, all the stormwater will ultimately get to the river either Fowler Avenue area from the, from mid, mid-city north, or where, where does it spill out going south of Bush?
There's outfalls all over the river. It's hard to, for him to make.
Is that where, is that where the goats come into play in the, in those, in those regions?
No.
The river goats, or?
No.
Okay, because maybe all that's kind of blockage.
No, so the, so the streets department does have, they have the, a boat, they've received a surplus from the police department, and they do inspect the outfalls on the river, generally when it's low, so you can see the outfalls. But when the river was low, and actually I looked at the USGS number right before I stood up here, in June, the river's running about 19 feet, and, and currently today, it's 24 and a half feet, I think is where we're at right now. So you're not going to see those outfall structures, they're below, they're below the water.
Okay. Got it? You set?
I'm good.
Councilmember Chambers?
Thank you. If we didn't have any debris on Sunday that blocked things, could our system handle five or six inches an hour? Just say no.
So, Sunday, and I'm just going to be honest, Sunday was odd, and Brian, the city engineer and I, we talked about this. It seemed to sit, Bush and 56th, where Terrace Heights did not get what they got down there. So when I looked at the radar during the phone calls, it seemed to be in the shape of a V, it seemed to be sitting over in one spot, and for an hour, more so, it didn't move. So to answer your question, they're all going to be different. I mean, that, could it, maybe if it passes through the edge of the city and only, and only affects one part of the system? There's, there's so many could's. Could the river be at 19 feet and everything flushes through as fast as it could when it's dry? Er, yes. Could the river be at 25 feet, 27 feet, and nothing move? Sure. I mean, we're not going to handle any of it. So, I mean, we're however many feet above sea level, and, and the river is, you know, held with a dam for the water supply, and, I mean, we, it, it relieved itself shortly. I will say that, you know, I'm, I don't live in Temple Terrace, I'm just a little bit outside of town. When I was here, I saw a little bit of standing water, but it was quickly gone. So the folks that, that were here before me, they dealt with some water, they were in some water, but 30, 35 minutes, they were, they were out of water, so.
So I, I know we classify things as 100-year flood, 20-year flood, rainfall, things like that. Was this a 100-year? Does, does anybody know? Was this a 1,000-year, a NOAA event? Just out of curiosity, what a five or six inch an hour is?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it falls into any of those classifications. I, I call it the September 1st 24 rain event. That's all I like.
Okay, good deal. But, but you have alluded to, and our citizens need to know, that not all the drainage is ours. I mean, you have DOT, you have county ponds, I know the pond at Sunny, Sunnyside and Bullard, and over by Inverness and Bullard. Those are county ponds, and how they're maintained is not the way we maintain them. So, there's all that. That's it.
Vice Mayor?
My question is about what responsibility we might have in terms of things going down the storm drain that don't belong there, like grass clippings and, and such, and how much do you think that played a role in this, and what might we do to prevent that in the future?
So, perfect question, and, and I appreciate that, because I had a great example today as Ron and I were doing these evaluations. I, we drove by a homeowner doing his lawn care, and he had his leaf mower out, and he's blowing everything out into the street.
Yeah.
And I drove by, we went to, we looked at what we needed to, because we had a tree piece fall, and we came back, and I, I asked Ron, I said, all right, stop, let me, let me just have this conversation. So, as a homeowner, his plan of lawn care was blow it all out into the street, and I was good with that, a little bit, because the storm drain was right across the street. And as, in the, in the conversation, the education piece, I said, you know, it's a stormwater violation, you can't blow this into the street because it goes into the storm drain. And he said, but the street sweeper's right here. And I said, I, I'm perfectly fine with that, but the idea is you should clean this up. And he goes, I always do, for the most part, he said, but I heard a street sweeper, so I got busy. So, you know, as, as a homeowner, should never blow it into the street, should, should try and collect, I mean, we offer the Wednesday yard waste, yard debris pickup, that's part. We use all those numbers as part of our MS4 permit, it's all submitted as data that we collect for the amount of tons that we remove from the city. The street sweeper is also part of that. The street, all the street sweeping collections are weighed, and we use that as part of our, our numbers for our permit. So, as homeowners, it's always good to not put things in the street, not blow grass clippings out, I mean, you know, anything to keep items out. Papers, newspapers, as I said, probably 10 to 15 at the 113th and Gillette Pond today, just laying on the bank, which means they passed through the system and popped up there and washed up on the bank. So, you know, I, just, whatever's loose and out, you know, if it's not your paper, homeowners, if you pick it up and just throw it away, it's, it's okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez?
I just have a question for you about the process of asking Swift Mud, because, so the bypass canal was created after some flooding in Temple Terrace to help alleviate the height of the river, or the river level. And if the bypass canal, if the river's very high, and the bypass canal is very high, what's the process for the city, if we know that there's a weather event coming through, to ask someone to drop the levels so that it could handle the, the water that's going to come through our system?
I'm, I'm being honest, I think my.
I do, I know the answer to that. But they do draw down the.
They do, but I'm asking, do they just do this without any?
Yes, yeah, there's a slot, Amber's here, but I know the answer already too, she can, but there's a slot. The rivers kept assuming there's enough water, and it appears that there's enough water, so the minimum goes, you know, but, but there's a slot. At a certain point, at the Fowler Avenue gauge, is when they restrict or close the structure north of the city to divert water into the canal. They normally alert us when they close it completely, but they tinker with that structure all the time to restrict it or enlarge it, or, they don't call us every time, or they'd be calling us every week to tell us we closed it 30%. Well, you know, we don't care about that. So.
I'm just wondering.
Yeah, it's not on demand.
Something's happening, and we do, and we say, hey, uh.
Yeah, no, they, they do draw it down. I know the answer to that from previous experiences, why I'm calling. So we, we, you can call over there, because, okay, there's a hurricane in the Gulf, are you drawing it down? But I've never once had a time when they weren't already on top, you know, they, that, that's what they do, so. And they will tell you quickly, I'm speaking for Swift Mud here, not Amber, but they will tell you quickly that they may not keep the river water out of your backyard if you live on the river, but their goal is to keep it out of your house. So they may, your, your dock and your boat might get inundated, but they're trying to keep it out of your house. So, not to, not to speak for you, but I, I've heard it 100 times over, I know that.
I will say, for Hurricane Debbie, the county did send out, send out a notification, which I passed on the city manager when they, when they opened the bypass canal, because that created some additional water, which closed Morse Bridge Road. So I, I think the county does a great job, the, the emergency services folks, to let us know what they are doing, which may have some impact on us.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Councilmembers, other questions for Mr. Warnefield?
No.
Thank you, Jason. When we were on new business.
Yes, I have some.
Well, Councilmember Fernandez, were you done with this item?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Chambers?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we just got the report on our business tax renovation, and to ask staff to do a report, maybe the middle of next year sometime, on how the transition went, I would like to get the council's approval to assign work to staff. So, I don't want to assign it, but I, I would like to see a report on how that transition's gone.
Would you be, just, just a clarification, that's a great idea, would you be amenable to this coming in, in conjunction with the beginning of the budget process, where we discuss the revenues?
Sure, and it, it could also be just like the city manager's quarterly reports or anything else.
Right, but that would be a time when they'd be naturally looking at that number anyway.
That's fine, just at some point, you know, had to go.
But that would give them the ability to produce that number without a separate step. Is that?
Oh, yeah.
Counsel, is that timely enough for everybody?
Yes.
City manager, is that okay with you?
Thank you.
Okay. Other new business, board reports. I don't have anything either. City managers, city managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I've got the pleasure this evening of introducing one of our newest staff members. As council, thank, thank you to the council for approving the utility billing manager position. We recruited nationally for that position, and we were very fortunate to find a great candidate, Angela Torres. Angela hails from, well, her last stop was Indiana, so that's how far we're now reaching for our recruitment. So, so we're going right into the Midwest, and her first day was last week, last Friday, I believe it was. So if you wouldn't mind, I'd love to have her come up and introduce herself.
Welcome, good evening.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to meet all of you. Just wanted to say I'm thrilled to join the finance team, and I'm very excited to add inefficiencies and uphold all the values that you already have in your wonderful city.
Good, thank you. So you came to us from Indiana?
Yes, Plainfield, Indiana.
Where did you work, in, in the same field in Indiana?
Yes, I was a customer service and utility billing manager for the town of Plainfield, which coincidentally is a town, but it is slightly larger, as in more residents, more utility bills.
But we're better.
Yes, absolutely. Well, that's why I came. That's true. Beautiful weather.
Well, we are thrilled to have you aboard. We've been waiting for a while, and we knew you were coming, and we knew we had to wait for you to move and so forth, but, so you started Friday?
Yes.
Well, we're thrilled to have you. So you brought the rain.
I must have.
We haven't had a flood like this, so, okay, we, so.
I apologize, apologize, Jason.
Well, we are very happy to have you aboard, and you're joining a terrific team, I'm sure you can tell that already, but, so, welcome to the city.
Thank you so much.
Welcome. That's all you have. City attorneys' report.
It's not necessarily a report, I just wanted to mention that I received notification last week that I was appointed to the Florida League of Cities, one of their legislative policy committees, and the title of it is Development Code Compliance and Redevelopment Committee. So, I guess I'll occasionally go to a meeting.
Okay, so.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations is right. So, on that note, councilmembers, I'm glad you reminded me to say this, if, I, I'm not aware of any legislative priorities that we as a group have, other than to try to protect home rule, which is annually, that's the same kind of thing annually. But if we do have legislative priorities that you would like or to propose that we formulate a position on, now would be a good time to do that before session gears up. If you, if we as a body decide on a priority, this gives me and our consultant time to start to work on that, so, just think about that.
Is it late session or early session this year?
It's March.
March, late session.
So we have time, but, but now's, now's the time to start thinking about that, though, so. Okay, anything else to come before the council? Directors, everybody good, happy, just thrilled to go home? Right? Thank you, finance, again, for all your hard work, so. Okay, we will stand adjourned.
Jason, good job.